Items for discussion, one call to order, two review of agenda, five minutes, the mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation discussion on locations for the future stop sign cameras, twenty minutes. The city manager, Koresh Kamali and Mr. Dan Goodman from the Tool Design Group will make a presentation to the mayor and council on the locations for the stop sign cameras in the city. Number four, presentation and discussion on report from the Recreation Committee, twenty minutes, the mayor and council will receive a report from the Recreation Committee. Number five, presentation of minutes, two minutes, the city clerk will present January seventh, twenty twenty five legislative minutes to the mayor and council. And number six, adjournment.
Thank you so much. So number four is has withdrawn from the agenda. We are moving it to next month, so please delete number four from the agenda. All right, so moving on to number three, presentation discussion on locations for futures stop signs cameras. Our city manager, Mr. Kamali and Dan Goodman from Tool Design will make a presentation to mayor and council on the locations for the stop sign cameras in the city. And just to point out, this is the starting of the process. There's other work that needs to happen, including turn them into the county for approval. So I don't want people to think that after today's presentation, they will automatically pop up. And there's obviously a whole process that goes even after the approval. Okay, all right, so Mr. Kamali and Dan, the floor is yours, associate chief here, welcome chief as well, go ahead.
All right, mayor, thank you. I just, you know, turn it over to Dan quickly and we have a presentation for you guys tonight. To to provide the proposed locations for the automated traffic enforcement. Based on the vision zero study and the data from the police department by chief. So then the floor is yours.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Kamali. And thank you, everybody, for for having us here tonight. Our, I'm joined here by my colleague Jay Swiderski and we are going to give a quick presentation. And as Mr. Kamali mentioned, the goal is to provide a little bit of background on automated speed enforcement. And then really zero in on potential locations for for speed cameras and stop sign cameras. As Mr. Kamali said, I want to point out, and as the mayor mentioned as well. This is the first step of an ongoing conversation. The first step will be submitting a letter to the county, which is really about getting the all of the potential locations approved. After that, we are gonna actually do a cost estimate and figure out how much these cost. And so what you see tonight will probably be more than the city can actually afford based on the grant. But but we thought it was best to actually give the city the most flexibility possible in the submittal to the county. So that those decisions can be made with as many options as possible. I'm gonna share the screen right now. And as I do that, I'll just mention, do you, do you see that now?
No, not yet. Melissa, please allow them to share the screen.
Let's see here, how about? How about that now?
Yeah, we could see it, thank you.
Okay, okay, great. I will kind of, as I get into it, I'll just mention that that we were pleased to get the FHWA grant agreement. And I think, as as you all know, we also have the categorical exclusion secured and Mr. Kamali and I were were talking to FHWA today. And it's, he said that this was actually the his only grant recipient that has categorical exclusion for their SS four A grant. So I'm really, really pleased that we were able to get that secured so quickly. And it it allows us to move forward in this conversation, which is really important. So what we're gonna talk about, just what is automated speed informant enforcement? We'll talk, remind you what we have in the Vision Zero Plan and what we put in the SS four A grant. We're gonna talk about proposed locations for the stop sign and speed safety cameras. And then there's a little bit of background in the PowerPoint that was distributed. We don't need to go over all that. Our goal is to spend most of the time on the proposed locations. This is background information and I will give Jay Swiderski a minute to say anything that I think that Jay, that you think is particularly important for the city to know about automated speed enforcement.
So I think most of this should be pretty familiar to folks. We know that speed and red light cameras have various safety benefits, including, you know, they help reduce crashes by helping people, you know, slow down, stop at red lights and speed or stop sign cameras are slightly newer, slightly less well studied. But we would expect to see a similar reduction in crashes from stop sign cameras also. And, you know, again, they allow us to get the behavior change of enforcing these traffic restrictions or traffic regulations without having to have a police officer physically there to hand out a ticket, which is both safer for the police officers and for the for everyone and allows the police officers to focus on other things that actually require a physical presence. And, you know, we have some sort of general implementation guidance about, you know, where you would want to mount cameras like these. Stop sign and red light automated enforcement is particularly recommended for intersections with previously documented red light and stop sign running. And so as we'll see later on, you know, we're focusing on suggesting for locations for these stop sign cameras where the police have previously handed out large numbers of citations and warnings for running stop signs as well as similar locations, perhaps nearby or on parallel streets. So that people can't just go to the next street over and run the stop sign there as well.
Great, thank you, Jay. And the implementation piece, I think, is an important thing to point out as well. Because at this point, we haven't gone to see if there's the exact right telephone pole or something else to secure the device. That will happen later. So right now, we're just talking about potential locations. But some of those potential locations, it may not, it may be infeasible to actually install the device. But we haven't gotten to that point and the contractor, once that contractor is procured, we assume that they would help figure out which locations are actually feasible from a technical standpoint. But just as a quick reminder, the the twenty twenty three Vision Zero Plan, it mentions two kinds of automated enforcement. Discouraging through truck traffic in part by automated enforcement. It also talks about implementing automated speed enforcement on residential streets. And it it mentions specifically speed enforcement in in school zones. And so the the Vision Zero Plan kind of references speed enforcement. Then the city submitted the grant that that it received. And in that grant, we talked about school zone safety improvements on kind of Bunker Hill Road and Thirty Fourth Street. It was discussed, Bunker Hill Road Traffic Calming was discussed in the grant agreement. And then an automated speed enforcement program that prioritizes residential street locations on the high injury network was discussed in the the grant agreement. And and as a reminder, in the grant agreement that the city received, there was four hundred thousand dollars in federal funds. And then one hundred thousand dollars in local funds, so a total of five hundred thousand dollars in the SS four A grant available for automated speed enforcement. Jay, do you want to say a couple of things about the automated, the ATs and Mount Rainier law?
So the state law and county laws around automated enforcement and specifically stop sign enforcement specifically require the city council to pass laws authorizing automated speed and stop sign enforcement cameras. And so the speed camera program was authorized a few years ago. And the stop sign monitoring systems legislation was actually authorized last June, which actually beat the county law by a good six months. So the county law, which passed in November, will actually take effect next month. So you're actually a little ahead of the game there.
Okay, great.
But the the county law requires the city to specifically request locations. So that's part of why we're going through this now.
Okay, and so so I want to just kind of start the conversation with a reminder that it's the high injury network and school zones are kind of the focus in the the Vision Zero Plan and in the the grant agreement. And so the graphic that you see on the right is the overall high injury network that was in the Vision Zero Plan. And so if we, you know, we we know that that what we're talking about now, the city is not going to be putting speed cameras or speed enforcement on S H A roads as part of this conversation. And so as we start to think about the high injury network that we're really focused on, that data input really gets us to think about Thirty First Street, Thirty Fourth Street, Bunker Hill and Otis are kind of the core internal city streets that that were identified as the high injury network for the city. We know that that school zones with the two elementary schools and and how we define school zones, it's quite quite large. And the the technical definition of what counts as a school zone. And when you look at a city the size of Mount Rainier with the two schools and a buffer around those school zones, it it generally includes the whole city. And so so that's is all considered to be a school zone. And we've also taken a look at the speed and stop sign enforcement data. And so so we can, we can talk a little bit more about that as we think about the locations with you. This is a summary table, which is really the five year at a glance stop sign violations and speed violations, the warnings and the citations. And and we tried to look through that data and try to get the big picture story from that. And and you'll see that on the next few slides. So so let's jump right into it. The overall, we've, we've looked at the proposed speed enforcement cameras as as one of the the potential tools. If you, if you all probably know the speed camera that's on Rhode Island Avenue. If you look over here on the side in Street View, this is what it, what it looks like. And so this is a standalone device on a on a very, you know, not a relatively small infrastructure investment. But the locations that that we've thought were were potentially viable for for that kind of device. We're on Varnum Road on the, and the list, we'll have a list on the next slide as well. Varnum Road off of Eastern, then Arundel and Thirty Fourth has a potential location. And then we we looked at Thirty First Street is on the high injury network. And so so we thought something by the Thirty First Street Park right there might make sense for that. But I think that Jay mentioned one thing that we also want to be collectively thinking about is we don't want to do something on one street that just pushes the speeding over to another street. And so we thought that thirty and thirty first both might make sense for that. And then on Bunker Hill Road, we know that that was a top area of focus in the Vision Zero Plan. And so on Bunker Hill and Thirty Fourth and then Bunker Hill and Thirty Sixth. Bunker Hill and Thirty Sixth is actually one of the first final design locations that will be coming through for project implementation funded by this grant. And so a speed camera there in conjunction with those infrastructure changes, we think might would potentially help address one of the most important kind of cut through speeding issues that we heard a lot about from the community. And then the last one was down on Otis, was another part of the the high injury network that was that was described in the Vision Zero Plan that we thought was a potentially viable location for a camera. And so these are the the locations that I just mentioned again, Varnum, Thirty Fourth, Arundel, Thirty and Thirty First, and then Bunker Hill and Otis. And I think I'll, I'll stop there for a minute and see if folks have have any reaction to that. Or if you'd like to provide any feedback based on those those five locations.
I think if you can keep going and then we'll ask questions at the end, that'd be great.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so then, as we look at the speed camera or the, I'm sorry, the stop sign camera locations. Again, this, you know, it's a, it's a lot and we recognize that. But I want to emphasize again that that it doesn't end up looking like this. And and, you know, as we get the cost estimates back from the speed camera, the stop sign camera company, we think that it probably ends up being fewer than this. But there's an example, if you're interested in checking it out, in DC on Kansas Avenue at Buchanan. If you look up on the the light pole here, it's just this device pointing towards the stop sign at Kansas and Buchanan is kind of what it looks like. So very unobtrusive. But the the locations here, there's two stop signs on on Arundel that that seem like potential locations for that on Chilum and Queenstown was a location. We know right in front of Thomas S. Stone Elementary School, we really want to be focusing the speed, speed, the stop sign enforcement around the elementary schools. And so you'll see that we have have that in front of in front of the school there. And then we've got a couple more on Bunker Hill and Shepherd that are really trying to slow down the speed around Mount Rainier Elementary School. But as we come down Thirty Fourth, there's a couple of locations that we think make some sense, Tilden. And then, and the list is on the next slide. There's two on Shepherd, there's three potentials on Bunker Hill. And then again, on Otis, there's two at Thirty Seventh and Thirty Fourth. And so these were ones that seemed like potential locations that really emphasize slowing down school, get making sure people are stopping at stop signs around elementary schools. Really picking out potential locations on the high injury network. And also trying to to account for the enforcement data that we received a few days ago. And so Jay, do you want to say something about the top locations and stop sign violations based on your look at that data? And these are bolded on the slide that you see here.
Right, so looking at the data that was provided from the police, there were, there's a large variation in locations where where tickets or warnings were being issued. But some of the, a few that really jump out, Thirty Fourth and Tilden had by far the highest number. But the intersection of Chilum and Queenstown and in parallel to that, the intersection of Queenstown and Chilum, and assuming that this is, you know, based on which street the vehicles were actually traveling on. And so you'll see also Thirty Fourth and Otis and Otis and Thirty Fourth also both show up in this data as among the highest locations. And then Thirty First and Arundel is another high volume location in the data of where police in the five years of data that we were provided are already issuing lots of tickets. The other thing with this, though, is that, you know, partly this depends on either where the police are already, you know, being stationed or happened to catch people who are violating. And so that's why we also are looking at other locations that are either in parallel or nearby or have similar aspects, like, for example, Thirty Fourth and Tilden is at the top of a hill. We also look at, you know, intersections like Thirty Fourth and Webster, which doesn't have quite as many, but is also at the bottom of the hill. So we want to make sure that when people are coming down that hill, they're also stopping at the next stop sign. And things like that.
I'm gonna just go to our our last slide and then we'll, we'll open it up for for discussion. We can go back to the map also when we do that. But but as Jay had mentioned, the state and county law requires that the county count, the county council has to approve the locations of the individual stop sign systems. A few of those, kind of the initial set of those in Prince George's County. They were approved in November twenty twenty four, and so so we'll see those implemented in the coming months presumably. But the city manager or chief of police must send a letter to the county council. And I know council member Woodall, you have drafted a letter that that kind of coming out of this conversation, we can, we can work with Mr. Kamali to update and send. But the city must solicit bids for a contractor to install the camera systems. And so that's something that would happen in the coming months presumably. Once the cost of the units, kind of once we've, once there is a contractor and we have some kind of estimate of what the cost would be, then 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 we would zero in on the actual locations. So, you know, and obviously, if more funding became available, more could be put out. Another, I'll mention another potential reason to have a larger list rather than a smaller list is that would, it would enable the city to move the the stop sign enforcement, for example, from one location to another with having, without having to go back to the county to ask for permission. And so the 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 stop sign enforcement, the contractor would have to kind of provide the details on this. But but our understanding is that they could, they could be kind of uninstalled and moved. It seems like that would be not be too hard to do. And so having more locations would allow for that and just wanted to to point that out. And so with that, I'm gonna move back to the overall map and then open it up for discussion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So we're gonna go to Jared, I'm gonna go you, Valerie, Danielle and Luke, go ahead, the floor is yours. Jared?
All right, yep, thank you so much. And I thank you, Dan, thank you, Mr. Kamali, for your work on this. I really just want to thank you for the time and the focus and the data driven nature of this. You know, we are, obviously, this would be a big shift, an important move for safety in town. But, you know, demonstrating to our residents how and why we made the decisions rather than just haphazardly throwing some locations across the lines, really important. I also think it's really important, if we're bringing a large list of locations to the county, that, including, you know, a set of potential locations in a smaller subset where we plan to actually implement them right now, that we really define and explain to them why we're doing what we're doing. So one quick question and it relates to a clarification of some things you said earlier. If I'm looking at this map right now, for each of, let's just take Thirty Fourth Street where there's a number of stop stop sign cameras proposed. Is, does the sign there, does that, are you proposing both a north and southbound on on that, on that, at that location? Is that what that means or was there a certain direction? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that, well, we haven't gotten to the implementation, we're just talking about the location right now. And so, Jay, I don't know if you want to speak to this, I believe you can do two way, is that right, Jay? Is that your understanding?
I, I'm not sure if, you know, a given camera could do, you know, both sides of an intersection or both directions. Or if that would require, you know, multiple units focused on the same intersection.
Well, that was my assumption, is it would be, it would be multi, if you were doing two way, you would need two different cameras presumably, most likely.
What I meant, what I meant here is like, there's this list of fifteen locations, actually thirty, right? Because.
So, yeah, what I will say, I mean, no, not necessarily. There, you know, I know that, for example, in the District of Columbia, they often will do just one direction. And there are some places where they will do both sides of an intersection. And there are some places where they will do both sides of an intersection. Or, you know, both let, both sides, both streets that intersect. Um, but it's not, it, it doesn't have to be. Um, and so one thing that was not clear from the data that was, that we had available. But which, you know, may be uh determined with some, you know, further either police data or further research. You know, could be if you are seeing more people running a stop sign in a given direction. Uh, then it may only be necessary to put the camera for that direction. So for example, on Thirty Fourth, if, you know, at uh Webster. If you're only having people, you know, coming down the hill northbound, running the stop sign. Whereas people coming south past the school are actually obeying it, then you may only need the camera on one side.
Got it. And the second question was, in terms of the enforcement data um that you'd drawn from. Was that kind of based on a number and placement? Was that just sort of a straight number of violations or violations relative to um traffic volume on that street? So for like, for instance, I remember from the traffic study that you all did as part of our vision zero plan and speed, speed reduction study. Um, like a Rundle, Bunker Hill and Thirty Fourth, uh were like the three streets with, because they have a lot of pass through commuter traffic. Have like a much higher number of cars per day, I think it's like a couple thousand. Whereas a lot of those, some of the neighborhood streets here um may only have a couple hundred. You know, I'm not, not to discount, obviously the tr- the safety issue is there, but kind of just curious how the. Violations, total violations or violations relative to the volume of traffic that might be on that street.
No, we were just provided uh a straight list of, or number of citations and warnings that were issued at each intersection.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, looking at the map, other than uh a couple of, you know, locations to this. To one side or the other, you'll see that almost all of them are located on those. Four cut through streets that are on the high injury network. You know, almost everything is on Thirty Fourth, Arundel, Thirtieth and Bunker Hill. Um, and then Otis Street, uh, you know, was also a. Uh, as I recall from the vision zero plan study, a site of a large number of speed related crashes.
The last question I had was because state law currently.
Wrap it out Jared, this is like going over too many mark.
Sorry, but last question was uh, state law prohibits us from doing a um. Issuing tickets with speed enforcement cameras over twelve miles an hour, unless it's more than twelve miles an hour. Um, some of these streets uh, they're speeding, but is, was speeding. At such a speed that uh are, if we installed cameras, we'd be able to issue, actually issue tickets. Or would it fall below that threshold?
Um, yeah, well, go ahead.
That, I, that information was in the list that we were provided.
Got it.
The, the numbers, um, I didn't look specifically at, you know, which tickets were being issued. So much as just the volume of tickets that were issued.
Got it, okay.
And most, frankly, most of the speed related tickets were on uh the state roads.
Got it, all right, thank you, that's all, appreciate it.
Everyone, I need to add more time to the clock, can we go ahead and add another six minutes to the clock, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you so much, any discussion, objection, extension here now in six more minutes, I've been added to the clock, thank you Melissa. And um Valerie, I'm gonna ask you to speak and can you go ahead and take over? Because um where I'm at, I could hear you guys, but it's a little bit difficult for me to speak as well. So go ahead and take over and then after Valerie, we have Danielle and Luke. And um if there's other questions, we'll move on, how do you call it? Um, to closing the meeting after presentation of the minutes, okay? And Valerie, you could take it, you could take it on from this point on.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Kamali and Chief Austin for working on this with tool design. Um, I appreciate all the work that you've put into this and looking into this. Um, I just want to remind people that this is preemptive to get an okay by the county council um and for their support. Um, and authorization doesn't mean that we'll finally put these locations anywhere. Um, um, do you, um, I guess my only real question at this point is, um, I know we're gonna do a cost analysis later on. But um it said seventy five thousand dollars per camera plus five thousand dollars for operations. Um, do we know if stop sign cameras are as much money as, as speed cameras or if they're similar?
We, we don't have that cost estimate at this point, I think we'll get it, we'll get it as soon as uh Mr. Kamali is able to put out the bid. And receive a bid back. Um, we suspect that the stop sign would be um less expensive than the camera, but we don't have the details right now on that.
Okay, um, thank you, um, that was my only real question for now. Um, uh, so I guess Danielle and then Luke.
Awesome, thank you Valerie, um, and thank you gentlemen for uh making this presentation tonight. Um, I was looking this over uh beforehand and trying to get an idea of what was going on. And now that I have the clear, cause I was trying to figure out, why would we have to stop or to speed on thirtieth and thirty first? Right there at the food forest and then on the other street at the park. And I'm like, that makes sense, but even, you know, your clarification of that makes even more sense. Because we've, we've seen that, you know, they go from one to the other. So I really appreciate the clarification and the foresight on that. I love the idea of the uh stop sign camera up there, what I call five points, which is at Upsher and um thirty first and uh Rainier. Um, and uh the Tilden. Now, we, uh, Jared was already talking about the directional. I'm gonna assume that the directional for that, the intention would be for those coming down the street towards Webster. And going up the street towards Tilden, because those are the two problematic areas, would that be correct in that assumption?
Jay, can you speak to that? I, I mean, I don't know that we made any decision on that at this point, but do you, would you like to say anything else?
No, I don't think we've, we've looked specifically at which direction any given one would, would look at. Um, other than the ones, you know, that like Thirty Fourth and Otis and Queenstown and Chilum. Where, you know, both streets in the intersection are mentioned as. Uh, high citation locations. Um, otherwise, uh, I don't think most of the data that we had available to look at. Indicates which direction is a problem. If one direction is more of a problem than the others. So that would be something that would remain to be dissolved, discerned.
Awesome, okay, the reason I ask is because the, the people that live right there around the intersection at Thirty Fourth and Tilden. That has been a problem with the stop sign for, for years. And so I want to be able to tell, you know, my residents over there, if there is a decision or like you just said, it, it's going to be up to deciding. Um, otherwise, I, and I love, thank you for the clarification also, Dan, when you said that we want to get approval for these spaces. We're not necessarily gonna put the cameras in all these, it just gives us the option of the approval went to move them around. And I love the idea that you said that they seem to be easily movable and I, I, I really love that. So, thank you guys so much for coming, Mr. Kamali, all of you for working on this and uh clarifying this all for the record, thank you.
Luke, you're up.
Thanks, Mary. Um, okay, I would say that um, just a few things. One, I just really appreciate everyone um taking the time out to um and do this tonight. Um, and just have a couple of questions and then a comment. Um, so first off, um, if we can. We, we submit all of these to the county. And let's say the county just hypothetically approves all of these stop sign cameras. Um, we could then choose to, depending on our budget, implement, ma- I'm gonna make this up, two in the first year. Could we then implement eight, four years later? Or the rest over like a fifteen year period, I'm just again making this up.
Um, we would need to check on how long the county's approval of the locations holds.
Okay.
But, but, but it would follow, I mean, I would think that yes, you could do that, but we would need to double check how, the duration of how that approval.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I think that would be helpful to know the duration, how long it lasts. But I think that's the kind of flexibility we get with going to the county first with all of them, right?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, and then I, I love that we added in the proposed speed enforcement cameras at other locations by doing some additional research. Um, and, you know, it definitely addresses concerns there near Thirty First and Taylor by the food forest that a lot of residents have. And I would just say a comment in general, um, you know, to the residents of Mount Rainier. Um, anyone I talk to wherever they live, there's a problem with speeding and stopping at their intersection, no matter where you are in the city. Um, and, you know, what, what we're going through here today is a piece of that, it's not the entire story. Um, there's a lot of um work that's gonna be done around the city in addition to speed cameras to address speeding holistically. Running of stop signs holistically. Um, and so this is just one um tool in our, in our toolbox that we're gonna deploy. Um, in addition to several others um that are coming um with the S S four A funding. Um, so just appreciate everyone's time and I think that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Luke, um Jared, I do see your hand is up, is that, no, you took it down.
Yeah, no, it's just a one point of clarification to Luke's that I think is helpful. H V three sixty four, uh, when this passed had a period of five years that this authority is active. Um, and, you know, it's not stated in the bill, but my ass, our assumption is that the legislature would have to vote to continue the program. Uh, in Prince George's or statewide at some point um over the five year, um, before the five year period is up to continue. So just, just a note for folks, thanks.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kamali, Chief Austin, do you guys have anything else to add to this presentation?
Yeah, as, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I do appreciate everyone patience. We just started this process and actually today, we're still finalizing the agreement with federal highway department. And hopefully, you know, we're gonna move fast as much as we can. But again, it all depends on the cost analysis, because we have only five hundred thousand dollars to be spent over five years. With S S four A, so hopefully we do as much as possible and we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thank you, thank you everyone.
Uh, good evening everyone, uh, one quick thing to add, uh, as we've looked at a camera vendors in the past. There have not been any upfront costs for the actual cameras. Uh, the vendors have installed the cameras, uh, there are monthly rental fees for the cameras, but no up, no upfront costs. So that's a, that's a good thing, that's uh speed cameras, uh, uh, red light cameras. And the same for uh upcoming uh stop sign cameras, so that's something good to add to this.
That's great, thank you, and, and I think we would.
But we need, we need chief, Dan, I'm sorry, chief, we need to check that one with the federal highway department. Because they want us to spend the money, so, and we have to find out whether we can rent it. Or, you know, purchase the device. You remember then, we were talking about this way back, you know, we just have to find out and make sure that, you know, rental is okay with them.
Yeah, and if there's a monthal- monthly fee, we would just need to make sure that federal highway agrees that we can use this money to cover the monthly. Any monthly fee beyond the tickets that they would make back, which would presumably be why they were doing that.
So it sounds like that, that's something to put into the next uh presentation on this topic. Uh, thank you, um, okay, presentation number four, presentation of minutes, two minutes. The city clerk will present the January seventh, twenty twenty five legislative meeting minutes to the mayor and council. Um, they are in your uh packages, so please review them, um, and then, um, and then we will vote on them at the next meeting. Um, and then before we adjourn upcoming events, F Y twenty twenty six, budget presentation Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Mayor and council work session, um, budget public hearing Saturday, March twenty tw- second, um, twenty twenty five. Um, community yard sale Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty five, egg hunt Saturday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, eleven A M to one P M at the nature center. And Mount Rainier Day is Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Um, and then also just as an F Y I, the Gateway C D C, um, will have a Black History Month event at the Gateway Media Arts Lab on Thursday, February twentieth. Um, and information will be coming out about that soon. Um, okay, um, so for finally, um, adjournment number five, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, um, so we're adjourned, have a good night everyone, thank you.
Good night everyone, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.